Feel with seating capacity that you want some other type of design that would minimize the effect of.
Right, and so one example, and it's not a recommendation to the group at all, is the idea that on the wings, if that, if the wings are see-through and the middle is not, then at least it gives a sort of an airiness of the design that blends it in better. It, I understand that there are things behind there that have to be, you know, they're a building, there's the storage area and everything else, but there is a model on those right and left wings that could be more open, and that to me would just do something to the visual impact. It's the, is the rear walls of this thing that I think overemphasized the structure of it.
Well, I don't think we can design the building. We perhaps can say that the, we feel the structure should be reduced in size, materially reduced in size, to give less visual impact, or something broad like that. I don't think, frankly, I don't, I think whatever we say, the council's gonna say something else, so.
And I'm fine if we were say, reduce the, reduce the size and don't put a percentage on it, and minimize the visual impact. Those two things I can support because I think that gives them direction, and then they can do the design with the, with the applicant. I'm fine with that.
Nobody else?
No. I mean, I would, I would say that if you're gonna say reduce the size, you'd have to, for me, you'd have to say something like, but not materially.
Okay.
Because I, I do think that by and large, the size, give or take, was, was approved, although I agree with you that I think sort of the opposite of, the chairman, that the design is what we, what we should be making the recommendations on, because, you know, this, this was the, this, this size that, that it was there, if we wanna reduce it a little bit, or recommend reducing it a little bit, that's, that's fine, but I, I would like to, if I'm participating on the yes side, indicate that we're not talking forty percent, or thirty percent, or something like that. It's, maybe you reduce it a little bit, but it's sort of the visual impact that I'm more concerned with.
I can go along with minimize the visual impacts and reduce the size, but not the word minimally, because that doesn't get you anything, that gets you one percent.
Well, Phil, why don't you make your motion? We all can, we have.
Structure, the top structure, not including the roof?
Yes. Roof is down here separately.
Right. What was your motion again, just so I get it right?
I'm just making, making sure we've got this right. I, I think that A and B are okay. I would move that we send our comments to the council on structure, including subsection A and B, complete.
There's two different.
There's multiple, it's reduced by forty percent, sixty, seventy percent.
There's two options. I'm sort of fiddle with it, like we are.
So how about if we say something like sixty to one hundred people, or sixty to ninety people, so that it gives them the range discussion?
Sixty to one hundred.
All right, sixty to one hundred, that makes it one line. And then how about forty to seventy-five reduction? What is this, sixty, seventy-five about the length? So they, they conflict for me.
Right.
So, how about significantly reduce the size of the structure? And then they determine what significantly means.
Okay, then we put that word in, significantly reduce.
Correct. We have forty to, forty to seventy-five.
Seating capacity?
Size.
Oh, forty to seventy-five, you said of the length?
Of, of the size of the building, yeah.
Yeah, I, I don't know how we get that.
That's a figure out at a level.
Yeah, right, this is too much dark work for me.
As a practical matter, I think this is one of the reasons that this is such an awkward deal, that you would really be sitting down with Little League and discussing it and say, how would you reduce?
They did it with the staff, you remember?
Yeah, well.
All right, so how about if we just, on B, we use something, like, in the reverse order, like do the minimal, minimize the visual impacts and reduce the size, and have that be the first part, and then, and with, with a, with a strong recommendation to consider, I, I hesitate to reuse the percentage because I can't face it on anything.
Well, right.
Yeah, so with a strong recommendation to significantly reduce the size of the structure. And then staff can relate what our conversation was, but until I, until I, I can't vote on a forty to sixty percent, because I, I don't know what that means.
I, well, I would agree, I mean, that's just a figure, I, I, throughout, as an example of how you could.
Right.
I think if you, if we say, the, as to the structure, we significantly should reduce the size and minimize the visual impact with a capacity of sixty to a hundred people per seating capacity.
With the twenty-four inch seat?
Yeah. At twenty-four.
And, and with an explanation from staff about why we chose twenty-four?
Sure.
So, so just out of curiosity, so if you take a hundred people at twenty-four inches per seat?
Two hundred and forty feet.
And what is, what is this? This is probably.
Two hundred feet.
How many of that, all right?
Two hundred feet.
Twenty, twenty, two hundred and forty feet.
Two hundred feet.
Yeah.
That'd be two hundred feet of seating, you could measure it along here and do it, but I don't think that's what we want.
No, no, I'm just trying to see whether they're mutually exclusive. If you're saying, we're gonna significantly reduce it, but we're gonna have this, what I'm trying to figure out is, is the seating already taking you to the point where you're not significantly reduced?
Depends on how many rows of seating you have, how many levels.
Well, there's, there's five levels in there, and I measured it three hundred and twenty linear feet of seating.
Yeah, so two hundred and forty, that's two hundred seat, two hundred feet right there.
Yeah, so that's a material that's significantly reducing the size and minimizing the visual effects.
Well, the visual effect's another one, Eric talked about having see-through areas and so forth.
Sure, but they.
And that's part of it.
That's part of it, but I don't think we can be specific, except to say, significantly reduce the size of the structure, minimize its visual effect, and allow seating of sixty to a hundred at twenty-four inches on center. All of which should reduce the size of the structure.
Well, it certainly gives the council the idea that we don't like the size of it.
That's correct.
That's the idea.
That's the idea. As to the final design, you know, that's gonna be determined by Little League with whoever the council's associate.
Okay, I move we forward to the council our recommendation on the structure as one, A, as stated, minimize visual impacts and so forth.
Okay. Sixty, all right, five. A is our motion for the structure, the size, and.
Off second. Oh, you have second.
All right, it's a good. And all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those against?
Aye.
Four to one. Okay.
The council will sure get an idea there's no unanimity on this whole question.
Well, it's, we all have different feelings about it, but, but I think one thing we do agree is the, the visual impact, the size of the structure should be materially.
Oh, I thought you were gonna talk it down.
Hmm?
I don't know, you can just ask, he keeps his mouth.
Do you hear, poor man?
No. I thought you were making a comment.
It's the whole way to end the meeting, huh?
I thought you were making a comment about how many cupcakes are in there.
That's your dinner. Okay, we've passed that, that deals with the size. B, of the structure, is the rest, location of the restrooms and storage. The reason I put it there is that if the structure is not large enough to fit all the restrooms and storage under the seating, that that storage and restrooms be moved to a space between the tennis courts and the railroad tracks, so it is not permanently staying.
Does that violate the setback?
Oh, sure.
I, I'd like to get some clarification for why it violates the setback. I mean, an accessory structural, ten feet, ten feet from the fence.
Yeah, the zoning district does not recognize accessory structures, all structures are main buildings and must be main building setbacks, so fifty foot outside.
So, so the, so the storage shed that's already there is sixty feet away from the fence?
The storage shed that's already there did not receive planning approval.
I see.
So it's in violation?
I don't know. I've been in that storage shelter, I don't think it's the applicant's name.
Oh, I saw that. Oh, okay, sorry.
I've been in there quite a bit.
Well.
It's sort of like.
All, all, all the second thing is try to give some flexibility to it, if the structure does not house the size of storage and the restrooms that are desired by Little League, that other, whatever storage, whatever restrooms are needed and not able to be housed in the modified structure be located between the tennis courts and the railroad tracks.
I'm not, I'm not comfortable with that.
Okay.
For a couple reasons. One, one is, I, I don't want another structure.
You want to.
Yeah, I, I know I won't, but it'll be there, I'll know it's there.
Yeah.
The, the other thing is, from an application standpoint, I'm looking, I'm looking for, you know, as little impact as I possibly can, which means one structure with as much stuff that it needs. And I, I honestly, I can visualize a design that does all the things we want to do with this site, with restrooms and storage area, with a see-through capability that does what everybody wants, and particularly when you have five-step leechers with, with some kind of storage potential underneath it, where not even, not even a separate door area, but like using the, the diagonal of that, so I, 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 I'm not, I, I don't, I don't need a separate structure for it anymore. My, my feeling is that we give a direction for a less impact, we give a direction for fewer seats, that may lead to some choices about maybe only needing one, one bathroom in this unisex or something like that, so.
Sure, no, that's fine.
I'm not sure the code allows it anymore.
Oh, really? Okay.
Yeah, but I, I.
Unisex.
Eric, Eric, I would, I would agree with what you have to say, if you, if you.
Oh, there's lost man.
If the commission feels, doesn't wanna deal with that issue, that this would only be an eventuality if the design doesn't allow the storage and restrooms they want. So we could just leave it without this, and they can figure it out to put the storage and restrooms under the structure. And if they need more space, they can come back and talk about that, as, as well as I would assume they'd have to give a variance to do. And we don't give variance. Okay, we'll just pass that.
Is that very okay with that?
I'm not sure what the recommendation was, when I started for punt.
Well, my rec, my thought is it's just not worth arguing about, if we have more storage and restrooms than the modified structure can handle, I say, let's not build another little structural shed or shack out there, let's hide it behind the tennis courts. And I think you were the one that talked about hide behind the tennis courts many months ago.
Yeah, I, I worry about safety in that situation.
Yeah, but anyway, let's just drop it, is what I'm saying. Unless somebody else wants to pick it up, I'm dropping it. Okay?
It, for me, here's why.
No recommend, I just put that down, as if we don't even have to deal with it.
Yeah, all right, yeah, and for me, that's the reason I'm leaving it alone, is because I, I wouldn't know how to recommend anything to a recommendation of a smaller site, so once I saw the smaller site, sound like it is, then I'd know what to do with all that.
Sure. Okay, color is another factor to talk about.
There was a recommendation from the Park and Rec Commission that the color be the same color as the darkest body color of the existing building in the park, which I believe is the water tower? Carriage House?
Carriage.
Thank you, Carriage House.
And for the record, we've gone and said we're happy to paint it whatever color Parks and Rec and the town wants.
You paint it pink?
No, we would not do that, we would not do that, we would like it to fit the, the park and blend in. The whole design, again, its structure, its intent, is designed to mimic the other buildings and flow with the rest of the buildings.
Good, good. Okay, do we say that is our recommendation also?
I don't, I don't, I don't mind. I don't wanna take a position on that, is that colors should blend with the rest of the park and leave it to the people to decide, I don't wanna dictate a color and then find out.
Even though Carriage House already has that.
No, but the Carriage House is a long way.
Oh, I agree with you.
So I don't know whether that's the right color.
All right, well, then why don't you make a motion, would you feel comfortable with that? I'm sure Little League will paint it any color but pink, and I will approve any color but, but pink.
I don't think we need.
All right, we'll just leave the color.
Yeah, just, just like we aren't addressing the.
Okay, that's fine.
The storage.
Is that agreeable with everybody?
Yeah.
Let's not address color.
The applicant's gonna recommend, take the recommendation of the.
Okay, now we get on to roof. Would someone do you like to speak about the roof?
We've got a.
Well, my comments have been there, what the ballot major said, covered seating, and it didn't say with a solid roof or anything about it. This roof is planned to be fifteen feet high, plus a two-foot cubo on top of that, makes it look like Churchill Downs a little bit, but anyway, it ought to have a, have a roof that protects people from foul balls, covered with removable temporary cover, or louvers, or some other different kind than a permanent hard roof. Furthermore, I made a comment, I think, that permanent covered roof will have certain attractions for wildlife, and the pigeons are gonna be underneath there, they come every place they can get, so it'll be another health hazard again.
I think having a removable roof is, is, is something that's gonna cause a lot of trouble, and it's not gonna, it's not gonna look very good. I'm not, I'm not comfortable for that, with that, and also, you know, like I said about the structure itself, I think this was the linchpin of the vote, the covered seating, and this was.
Roof structure.
Was, was the roof structure, you know, so I, I think that, I feel, I feel constrained that, that I would be able to support.
Mary Beth?
I think it needs to have some sort of a permanent roof, however, I don't think it needs to have the high-profile design that it, that it has at this time.
I, I would, I, first of all, I commend the looking forward, trying to come up with an interest in design, so it's not just a flat thing that looks like two wings of my aircraft house. So I, I appreciate that, and the only thing I would say is I prefer if it was all within code, rather than it being, I think it's believed, slightly above.
No, because this zoning district only has main buildings and no accessory structures, so everything is, it's within the height limits.
Okay, good, so, so the only thing I would say is that it looks a little more roofy than it might need to look, and that means that the visual impact of that roof with the, with the slant of it, you like that terminology, that's an advanced planning word, and I just wanted to make sure that we got that.
Roofiness?
Roofiness, yeah. And, and so what I'm looking at, again, is how would we minimize, minimize the look of that roof from a distance, or make it blend in as much as possible, and some of this downsizing could easily do that.
Well, why don't we just say, the roof should be a low-profile permanent roof?
Yeah, but I don't think it should be flat for sure, because it's too.
Or you could say permanent roof minimize visual impact.
Yeah, great, that's fine, I agree with you, that works for me. Good motion on your last motion.
Okay.
That's okay with me, either that or a solid.
What grass going up, that would look good. Do you wanna make a motion?
Before I turn to a pumpkin?
Yes.
Sure, I would get rid of one and get rid of three and say, the motion is two.
Okay. We have a motion, may we have a second? Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those against? No. The motion wins on the three-two basis. Okay. See, have we covered everything now? The only thing left is really what we're not really supposed to be, I mean, technically, I suppose, a narrow interpretation. We talked about the physical design, we still could put in at the bottom of the letter our recommendations, you know, some ideas on operating conditions, such as maintenance or time of use and so forth. Do you wanna do that, or just?
Do that.
Pardon?
As to do with lighting, as to do with snack bar. Apparently, in the write-up that we have in front of us, somehow the staff volunteered to be the one to take over the maintenance, and that surely isn't what the letter from the Little League had to say about that matter. They had to say, in, what was the date of this one? They had to say, oh, this was May eighth this year, maintenance, Menlo Avenue, Little League will be responsible for the maintenance and upkeep of the ball facility, including the seating area, restrooms, storage space, set out stencils and baseball playing field. They're to be responsible for it, not, not the town.
Well, maybe we can add an explanation from Little League.
So originally, we had proposed that we would maintain the field and the structures and all of that stuff. The Public Works Department said, no, we'll take care of it, it's a gift to the town, we will take care of it, you pay your fees, and we will then, as part of the conditional use permit, pay our fees to have the structures maintained to the standards of the town. Which, we're fine with, and by the way, there is no snack shack, we've been on record, well, many, many times, it's a snack facility, so I have no idea why it's that.
May I ask you a question now? Two years ago, the field I saw was in miserable condition.
Yes.
And the question then was, who is responsible for the maintenance?
We put in twenty-five thousand dollars into the field, reskining it, resurfacing.
No, at that time, why did the field get into that position in the first place?
To speak candidly, the maintenance of the town was atrocious. So we will continue to maintain.
You know, I believe that, and that's why I'm, I am concerned, when the town says it's gonna take it over, that doesn't necessarily mean.
It, it doesn't mean we'll stop.
No.
We'll still, we'll still help maintain the field, we will work with Public Works to make sure that we can.
And, and I think the Park Commission, I see a member there, should monitor to see that Public Works keeps the field up to standard.
I would welcome that very much.
Because that field two years ago, gee, I think was just awesome.
I agree with you wholeheartedly.
Well, the other way about, the other thing about that setup, and first of all, I like the fact that there's a fee associated, rather than having you go out there with lawn mowers and stuff. The, the other thing I like about that, that is that if I'm the applicant, I'm saying, what am I getting for my twenty-five thousand dollars? I'm paying a fee so I can use this field, so I'm gonna be saying, if you want me to pay, then get, I need performance, so that, I think that's a balance to it also, is that.
But it didn't work before.
And, and that's why we continue to help. We say, okay, we understand the town may have shortfalls with either staff or money, et cetera, at certain points, we're always willing to help kick in, we do the same thing in Menlo Park with our fields, we work with the town and say, can we do this, or we wanna take care of this, no problem. They're not in the business of repairing mounds and repairing and bringing in MVP, what's called turfis for the infield, turning it over and making it a safe playable surface, that's what we do. And other spot repairs, where we see holes, we notify the town, hey, we noticed this, would you like us to take care of it, or do you wanna send your crew? So it's a, it's a give and take, it has to be.
It's a new attitude or operation compared to two and a half years ago.
It's much better, much better.
So the question from an operating point of view is, will it continue seven, eight years ago?
And we know that in certain aspects, the town citizens wanna do some things in maintenance, and we're not very good at that. The town is not very good at maintenance, particularly with, with more maintenance in the park. The plan shows several planning areas, and they say there'll be low, low water use and so forth and so on, they still have to be maintained. There's a lot more of the maintenance here, the VCI devils through the details.
So, so how about if we do this, from, from that point of this list, that we make a recommendation to, to the council, that they give clear direction on each one of these, and I would change D to no snack bar, so that they, they understand that these are areas that we are recommending, that they give clear direction on, and have a clear commitment to uphold either on our side or theirs. So on the maintenance issue, what's the maintenance schedule? On the, on the time of use, what's the time of use? And specify that in the approval process. I think, personally, I think we can take the lighting out, because we've addressed it, right, and other things, and, and we can put the no snack bar in there as sort of a clarification of the reiteration of what the applicant's already said, and it's made, matter of fact, in honoring of the, of the applicant, I'd take no snack bar as the applicant has, has stated they don't.
I've gotta do more than that on a snack bar, no snack bar ever, because while it's not proposed today, day after tomorrow will be.
All right, well, that, that, okay.
Always, I mean.
Ever is a long time for me, but.
It's good enough for me.
For short term, both you and me, Phil.
All right, and so, so if that, that tone, again, it says, the, the, we believe as a planning commission, that these areas need to be addressed, and we think you, you should come up with the specific areas.
Okay, so your idea is, let's point it out, give clear direction.
Right.
For a, a, a good performance, or.
Right.
Excellent performance, or whatever.
Is it rung the amplified sound, by the way?
No.
I'm sorry? No amplified sound? Let's specify no amplified sound.
Yeah, no, you know, these are just no flags, but these are really no.
So no flag?
I don't think we can regulate the American flag.
Yeah, I was gonna say, you've got a feeling.
I want, I want the Canadian flag.
You can.
I prefer E to be no signage or advertisements.
Okay.
Sponsorships.
All right, we can work that out in, in the drafting of the letter, I think these, this is really beyond, it's what we feel is important that they should consider in, in the agreement.
Yes.
Okay, do we feel we've covered this adequately?
I've got one more little thing I, I thought about, on snack, following the snack bar issue, Lisa, I don't know that the town has an ordinance prohibiting use of food service trucks?
No, we do not.
Suppose.
It's something we're talking about with the police department, those to possibly have a permit process. Well, because it occurs in the public right-of-way, so it's not a zoning.
And it's also a legal issue, sometimes you're prohibited from prohibiting that activity, there's a recent case on that, you can't tell them that they can't just park on it.
But I know the city attorney and the police chief are, are working on it.
Food service truck could find a little gold mine, pull it there on, on game day, and sell it once you sell it.
Ice cream guy.
Yeah, as long as there's a curb.
Good idea.
Well, but it's part of the agenda.
Well, the town property, yeah.
The town could limit it through.
Taco bar.
Yeah, they can, yeah.
I think they. Not in public right-of-way, though, it's different.
Right. Yeah, they're looking into it, there's been some recent developments in the law on what you can and can't do, so they're working it better. working on it better.
The cases sound like.
We may have to do something about soliciting, you know, ice cream guy.
Yeah.
But this, but this is frankly, part of what the council should be looking at. All we're doing is reminding them about some of this stuff.
The other thing is exclusive use.
Okay. You wanna say something in here as to?
Well, Little League wants to have exclusive use of the field from January through.
June or July?
June.
June.
I think during, during time of use, it's not, yeah, they're using it, they have exclusive use on Tuesday mornings. I think it's exclusive use during the times that they play baseball, which is.
We could make a statement that.
Well, they're, that's, that's.
That's the, yeah, sure. Uh, you know, what if you want, you can say that it's simply not reserved by Little League, but then other sports.
And use for games.
Okay. Good schedule for this. All right, I, I think we've concluded this part, are it? The next step, all right, go ahead.
I'm not, I mean, exclusive use during times reserved by Little League, that sounds like it's like it's everybody's field and there's gonna be a signup sheet, and Little League will, will have some use and somebody else can have some use. I mean, I mean, it's.
You're not gonna let the soccer play?
Not, I, I think.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I would, I would think that it's like, there's, there's certain times, like, whatever, three-thirty till seven-thirty on.
We've had an agreement, we've had it for years, we've never had a problem. And basically, what it is, is allowing us is that when we have games scheduled, if somebody else is on the field, we say we have the field reserved. And so our games and practices can take place. That's all it is. We've never had an issue where there's been a battle or anything that's ever had to be escalated. It's just part of the standard use agreement that we've had for thirteen years now.
Not even with, with Ross?
Not even. They've never been out there one time during one of our games.
So, yeah, so exclusive use during time, you know, yeah, as noted in the use.
Well, let, let, we could just.
Has provided during use.
Well, why don't you just say, just continue the existing.
Can say the existing grades as regards to time.
And that has limitations in it and has agreements in it.
Say no snack bar.
Yeah. I, I don't have a, by saying that, we continue what's there.
Yeah, that's fine, I just don't wanna make it sound like changing.
Right, exactly, no change.
Okay. All right, I think we're through with this.
Let me go back one thing just a little bit, 'cause we're sitting here, we're losing to getting out of here. Let's go back to the structure for a second. How about one more thing? Structure, house, everything. I had a couple of comments on drainage, and I don't think they were answered very well, in particular the one about the difference in elevation between the, the walkway at the rear of the, of the seating area and the difference in elevation to the tennis court and how the drainage is gonna be handled in that area. This, that is hardscape, it's a concrete walkway as was portrayed to us last month. And there is a, somewhere near a thirty-inch separate grade difference between where home plate is and the ball field, and I wanna know how that's gonna be handled. And we said in here, we replied, no retaining won't be needed. So the question would be, examine drainages between home, oh, that's good, trigger difference between home plate, examine, that's good, that's fine.
Well, I, you know, there are many ways you can handle it. I, and honestly, let's, let's not dictate, you may have to have a wall, depending on the amount of space you have, maybe you have a little wall or something.
Safety issue.
Yes.
So your suggestion is just examine, it's not taking a position.
Yes, and we, we, our, you know, our. Yeah, no, we wanna call attention to that area, it's a very sensitive area. So I don't think we can sit here and.
That's good, that's fine.
Yeah, okay, fine.
Examine and address any potential grade, drainage issues because of, all I'm saying is that, if you weren't here, you might not catch all that. So examine and address any potential drainage issues created by.
It's more the drainage issues, but is that okay?
Safety issue more.
Yeah, safety, yeah.
Right.
Issues created by the changes in grade.
Right.
It will, okay, what I'd like to do is.
Need a motion on that?
No, I don't think so. It's, it's.
I'm making a tag.
No, I'm just thinking that this is a common sense problem. You know, you've got, you've got a public area, you got a great difference.
Let's, let's.
And, and, well, okay.
Yeah, that's, that's more consistent.
Okay, all right, do you wanna make the motion?
I like the motion of, and we're comments of E drainage as portrayed in I, or one or whatever is.
Yeah, okay.
In one, the I.
That's a special tension. You wanna be your last second?
Fine.
All right.
He was saving that for the attorney.
You're right about that.
Okay.
Gonna make that motion.
All right, may I say that we come to a close?
No, you gotta hold it for there.
All right. All right.
And before, before you come to the vote, I wanna re, you know, go back to the fact that I think other than this stuff about that we admit that we may not have much authority to do stuff with, the rest of the stuff we did is pretty straightforward. Some of it, you're asking the council to do a fair amount of looking, and I'm concerned that, you know, if we look at a letter and pride comments and you guys come back next month and approve it, and then you go to look at the, the calendar, do we think that we've got enough clarity in the motions, the wording is up there?
I agree. I agree, you're gonna be gone, and we have a new member, and we'll have to spool that person up, and, and so I'm, I'm totally comfortable to say, having this be our, you know, our thing that we wanna put forward as a, as the.
You're gonna have to be drafted. I think you're gonna have to have, put it in some sort of form.
You can put it like that.